I mean, I don't know.
No audience, that's a team, I believe.
I want you to go jump with them.
I wouldn't.
She's pretty young. She's young, she's young, but we're gonna do it. You know, we're gonna think about those. Except for you guys representing all your. All your association.
You'll probably be like all of us. And all of them do policy. I'm not sure what the move is.
I heard a little bit about that. Well, she's. They just have.
But then I am with.
We just passed. He was in the midst. You're by the phone, Max, he will yes. He's got phone. I got a little rain. What was it doing?
What is going?
Well, I'm.
Thank you, please, for I did make coffee.
She said they had so much money on fire.
So. They lost some of their cars. What I'm here with one thing, so Phil hit so. Yeah. She was like, I don't know.
Honestly, I want to get a picture like that. They all seen that. The new ones, the new ones on the church.
I didn't look at how much on them.
I look like that.
Oh, because they're special.
They are.
They're brass.
Multi-colored.
Right.
They ain't going to chop a needle over it.
Her teeth were up saying.
I wasn't gonna lie. I don't. She's gonna send by listening. Started to go talk. The house here, man.
So we're gonna be at the which I call the gun show. We're at the one of the gun shows.
Two weeks. I thought it was that one.
Good.
That's okay.
That's a good song.
We got a regular city council meeting down Thursday, January eighteen, forty-four, seventy-one, four hundred. Six, seven, eight, one, these people. Texas, all notices and then you posted in accordance. In performance with the government code for the same Texas section five fifty-four dot zero seventy-two C. City Seymour attempts to make this meeting successful to all its citizens. If you have any of all superior needs. Please notify the city secretary at nine four zero eight eight nine three one four eight, at least four eight hours in advance. Agenda is also posted with the city's website at W S W W dot C A Seymour dot org with the following. Agenda being considered, we're gonna start an open meeting. Uh, let's begin with the uh, the roll call and then we'll go pledge allegiance and then. Um. Land win, councillor, councillor Monty Glass.
Here.
Councillor Scotters. Councillor Billy Henrys.
There.
Council lady Debbie Gillespie. Excellent. Okay, let's do the pledge and then we will remain standing for the prayer. I had someone come to do the prayer, but I don't think they made it tonight, so I'll do it separately. Alright, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Well, I'm thankful for everybody that's here tonight, uh, grateful for our town, our council, our city staff. And uh, everyone that uh resides here, can probably just bless us, maybe give us wisdom and insight. Bless what we did here tonight, as you Jesus, amen. Okay, uh, Mayor Proketa, Monty Glass, you have any announce anything you'd like to mention tonight?
I do want to thank the water department, uh, they put in a water cap for vibration. Our new uh, add-on building. I want to appreciate what they did. And play line for us and they fixed it in that cold spell the other day Monday, I think they fixed it Tuesday. So uh, kudos out to them. And uh, we're not done with frozen pots and everything else. Uh, just be very safe heaters and stuff like that, there was uh, I think two houses over this last weekend. That aren't getting on. Do the space heaters, try to keep pots from being frozen. So uh, just be safe and aware of that, that's all of that.
Uh, very, very good advice, I appreciate that, uh, I was gonna basically make them all the same lines that our city employees that were out this weather. Uh, you kind of, they're visible a lot of times, they're unsung. Appreciate councillor Glass written that up, there's uh, every department, I was trying to think of various, every, every part. Brakes, the weather, this is uh, help us remain in our homes and comfort. So uh, that's all I have, uh, sort of comments. Uh, Dr. Braeger, if you'd like to recognize a youth leadership.
Yes, thank you, man. I think the one thing that all of us have in common, we want to make a difference, we want to make difference in our communities, we want to make it better. And uh, it is my honor, my pleasure on behalf of the mayor and the city council to uh, recognize two outstanding students. Uh, these are adults, uh, eighteen years old and they're already making a huge impact on our community. And uh, I can imagine what these two have accomplished over the next year, these sixty, seventy years. Uh, they're highly motivated, highly driven, creative, innovative, they can work hard. And uh, they just have so many great qualities of leadership, uh, already at such a young age. And uh, I think that's to be admired, and I think that's to be honored and recognized. So if Peyton Mullin and Peyton Truett would go forward and have the uh, the great idea of your uh, outstanding accomplishments, your extraordinary leadership. And uh, already making significant impacts on our community, so I would just like to say thank you and break.
Uh, we have uh, Willie, one. Susan Stevenson, are you signing up for uh, public comments, is that correct?
Just to work. I don't even know if he's on or not, I'm talking loud, then you probably hear me. There we go. Uh, yes, sir, I wanted to ask if maybe it would be a possibility for the council to consider. I know that you have to do the closed council over so often and it's necessarily required, things like that, but with the extreme cold now, extreme heater in summer. Either considering maybe thinking about placing a heater system or a uh, some sort of fan outside, or is it possible when y'all have your closed sessions to consider maybe stepping into the extra room? And allowing the public to stay here, customers stationed between here and there, just to help some of the older folks. I think that might help with bringing more people to come to the meeting, if they do, they have to stand outside the corner of the stream, that's just a suggestion.
Thanks for that, we, we actually talked about that. I believe that's all we have, citizens comments that signed up. Uh, now, we were having presentations, uh, Seymour Chamber of Commerce. Y'all introduce yourselves, that might be helpful too.
Hi, I'm Miranda Baldwin, I am the Chamber of Commerce president. And this is Bob Morrow, Bobby Morrow, he's the vice president. Um, we just basically came out tonight just to give y'all a list of our um, upcoming events for twenty twenty-four from the Chamber of Commerce. Um, I've provided a list for y'all, so I don't have to um, read each thing out for you guys. Um, we appreciate the city of Seymour and y'all's participation um, in some of our events and allowing us to have uh, this facility um, once a month for our bingo, it's a lot of fun, y'all can come out. Um, and thanks to Bob for, for all of his hard work with that as well. Um, Bob is now going to introduce our new um, executive director for the Chamber of Commerce.
Hey, good evening, thank you, Miranda. Uh, after reviewing the applicants that we had, we went through all of them, several of them, and uh, I believe we picked the best candidate. Uh, so this time I would like to introduce Kathy Walright. Kathy, did you come up? I'm not gonna ask you to give a speech or anything. Uh, Kathy is our new executive director, she took um, office or took the position first week, this last week?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, yeah.
Monday was holiday.
For some. Anyway, uh, Ms. Walright is our executive director, so Kathy, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, um, now we have uh, next number two, Seymour helping hands concerning their upcoming events in Seymour. Stevenson.
Well, we just want to come in and make sure if there was any question thing on the car show, we're just bringing. And we, we always say you guys quite early and then we make sure we do a follow-up this time of year, every year about it. And the only other thing we'd like to ask is the possibility of using the electrical outlet on the pole. The claim in Washington, the Florida United Pharmacy is if that's a possibility during that time, even if we need to pay for some sort of service uses for that. And we would appreciate this, the downtown concept that we talked about was approved. And it would help us to make sure that we don't have any hitches with the equipment that's gonna be there. And that, if I have any questions about it.
Anybody, uh, this is only agenda, so we can answer questions or ask questions over the next uh. Would there be, anybody think of a problem with using some electrical, like in the musical equipment?
Speakers or something to that effect, uh, the gentleman came down with the band um, this last two weeks ago and said that, you know, great spot. It would be fine for us to run our, um, we got, we have those, I want to say industrial, but it's gonna be the wrong word, but they're really good extension cords. And they're very expensive and very nice, but at the same time, having a secondary source would be helpful because then we're right there. Of course, we've already asked for permissions to shut down the road area right there. We just wanted to make sure you guys haven't any concerns that we would address before, then we got two cars.
Uh, anybody thinks of anything to point out, you're gonna come back before May to talk.
We can, if you need us to.
I just want to give one more time.
Okay.
We run, run into something, or you run into something to point out, is it May, right?
Yes, sir, May fourth. And just as a word of note, I mean, Mr. Glass mentioned earlier about the fires and the only, um, we are still part of the road crossing, we do still have, we just got forty-two more fire uh, smoke alarms today to give out. And we are putting those in houses or getting those to people put up in their own houses for free, and that's a really good program for the town.
That's really good, thanks, Kim, appreciate it. Okay, uh, we got uh, number three, Layton McAdams, story walk presentation.
Sorry. Good evening, my name is Layton McAdams, and I'm a junior at Seymour High School, where I participate football, tennis, U I L academics, and student council. I'm also a member of the Baylor County four H. I want to thank you for allowing me to speak tonight about the community service project I would like to implement in Seymour Memorial Park, the council mission. My vision for this project is that I can help utilize an area of our park that is often overlooked, create excitement about reading among kids. Encourage family time and conversation, promote outdoors and our city park, and lastly, give back to our community. According to HuffPost, research is showing that the best predictor of future education achievements and life success is reading ability. Or more significantly, being an engaged reader. Doctor Seuss knew just what he was talking about when he said, the more that you read, the more things you will know, the more that you learn, the more places you'll go. Most kids would rather be outdoors, moving around though, not sitting inside reading their library. But like everything else you want to be good at, you must practice. I think that I have a solution to help get feet on the ground and readers going places, and I hope you will agree to help me. My answer is a story walk, which I will refer to as a trail toe. I put a version of one on the wall over here, if y'all have seen it. I'll quickly present to you what a story walk is and where I would like to place one, as well as the timeline, cost, maintenance involved. And lastly, I'll answer any questions that you have. Story walk is a program that promotes family time in nature, plus literacy, reading, exercise, and movement. The story walk was a project created in two thousand and seven by Andy Berger, son of my mom. Story walks can be found all across the US and worldwide thirteen countries. In a nutshell, I'll laminate pages from a children's book, attach the pages to a wooden stake. Install the stakes and pages along outdoor path. Then, kids and families will stroll down the trail and read the story. Questions will be included with the pages at the end of the story to prompt discussion and enhance learning. Feedback will also be asked for from adults who participate in the trail toe. QR codes will be displayed at the end of the story walk that will ask users a survey. There will also be a small notebook inside of a baggie on the last stake if users do not want to answer the survey on their phones. Here, the video of the type of displays that'll be used in parks, on school playgrounds, and even business windows for story walks. I plan to start off simple. I plan to start off simple with a wood stake that I showed earlier, or a wire display with a gorgoned plastic slid over them. Here's an example. But I will explore a more professional looking display, here's the video. I would like to place the trail toe along the park's walking track. It has been brought to my attention that the track around the Porwood Pavilion could use some traffic, as could the north end of the park. Story walks can also be taped to walls like here, zip tied to chain link fences, and even placed in business windows as you saw in the video. If you approve of the story walk project, I will plan to place the first book along the park's walking track around February twenty-third. A new story will be displayed each month on or around the first weekend of each month. I will leave for college in August of twenty twenty-five, therefore, at the time, the last trail will be displayed as of July of twenty twenty-five. I sincerely hope the project's success and another young group, or a young person or a group in our community will continue with it. I will definitely be discussing that possibility with the Baylor County four H. There will be no cost at this time to the city of Seymour, I take responsibility for securing funding for displays and picture books and stories. I'm a member of the Modern Boardman and will apply for a do-gooder grant in the amount of two hundred dollars to assist with costs. If the project receives positive feedback, I'll consider reaching out to friends of Baylor County Library, as well as other organizations, groups, and businesses. For maintenance, I'll check the trail toe at least once a week in order to make sure that everything is in place. I will be around the display signs if needed. I hope that you can envision the positive possibilities that the trail toe could have for our community. Seymour has also shaped me into the person I am today, and I would like to give back to its citizens, if you'll allow me. I appreciate your time, do y'all have any questions about the trail toe? And if I don't have an answer to y'all's question, my lovely assistant mom. Are there any questions?
I think you put a really good presentation together, I can kind of envision what you're talking about, councillor, it's an action item. A council vote at that time to do. I thought you did a good job, any questions?
Let me just, again, I've read right to council, uh, your plan on maintaining uh, stories. Upgrading stories, um, so for maintenance, I will check it obviously once a week to make sure that it's kept like the need. And obviously, the environment can ruin the books and stuff, so we will be buying backup books to install new pages if those get destroyed. And we'll have backup for all the other material that is placed if everything gets destroyed. And. I will, we need it to make it look pretty.
And what about marketing, uh, the project, if the council put it down?
Yes, sir.
You will know that.
Um, what I had in mind was making a Facebook account to try and market it out there on social media. And maybe pick a guy who runs the city parks Facebook account and get in contact with them, the advertiser there. And one more thing, I was gonna send an email to Mr. Anderson of the elementary school to think about putting one on the chain link fence or in the hallways, a story walk for the kids there. And maybe an advocate part there too.
But, but you do social media thing gets a lot of attention, generates surprise. Alright, that's it, thank you very much, and like I say, we, it's an action item, we have kind of a curvaceous agenda, so towards the end of the day, we'll, we'll have a vote and act.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have the city administrator.
City administrator reports, uh, Dr. Braeger, if you'd like to. City, what is it, Mayor? First of all, we do have a numerous construction projects going on, airport mighty project scheduled to begin at least last week, or the next week, if the weather comes out, they may be perfected. So they say, I think they've got deadlines like people, like they have plenty of time, so they'll be starting that, they've already, they're all they're putting out there. And uh, they've got three construction meetings, so they're ready to proceed. Uh, our tank rehabilitation project is completed, we actually put the tank up last uh, last week, that our. Uh, testing goes back today, and everything looks good, so as of today, the post was taken out back. Surface, so we're excited about that as well. Uh, and then water part of the condition is moving on very well, they've got skeleton part of it finished, and hopefully, uh, weather permits. Also, election is due upon us, so uh, final days of candidacy has already begun, it's gonna run through February sixteen. We're on February sixteen of the war election, we're talking about it February twenty-second, and those elections March fifth, and then. We made voting wheel three four twenty-four, and then vote maybe twenty-four, so those who choose to run for future, adding to that, that's your uh, city secretary, or Bush, uh, it's basically just like awesome. Also, you have your uh, let me get a point, then. We did have a couple of fishing tournaments coming up, one scheduled for April twenty-fourth, and then on June twenty-second, we have the kid fishing tournament, it's all for nine eleven. Many are supposed to be stocking these large thing, but it's also getting rehabilitated as well, so I'm really excited about that, maybe y'all doing the kid fishing tournaments. Uh, cattails and trees will wear, move out, and that will spread out, clean, so I think you get fishing tournament, a hundred wood, and then a lot more fun for kids, I know, uh, the parents, so. Uh, they look great, the council are there, she goes to sport, they'll just stay. So uh, it'll look great. It's, we have a council over there. She goes to support, you know, just like. I want to prepare to release a report, uh, on soft work, uh, in dead range leadership, a piece of grower at a hundred and twelve soft work. We have C C dead range. And also the report, the financial quarter best report, uh, being over a little bit higher revenue versus uh, features, but being that split this way. It's something we've seen a lot of people watch, but I'm really excited that we'll, that we should have. Survivors are reported on zero E on uh, UK debt as well. And also we have another hotel occupancy, uh, B, uh, class B, so that works uh, as well. They made up three uh, chicks and uh, those are your, were any questions that are going on? Any question about? Not now, but if you give us a call, it's done by, you know, it's, it's easy and all information, you can do that.
It is a, it is a. Alright, well, I guess we move to uh, for no question. To uh, public carries. Agenda, remember that. That's in your packet as well. Yeah, he, he, anyone might be, is uh, make a comment, we're already, we've considered agenda. Not, um, that's over there for the council. It's over in the package. You can't do that. Uh, let's, not, let's move on to action items. I'll make a motion. Send the agenda. Thank you. We got a motion base out. And uh, one second, all the papers say aye. Aye. All opposed, same say. Thank you. Welcome there. Okay, action items. Number nine, discuss, consider, take action, solicit bid for project demolition located at Cedar Street and Main Street that previously been.
Well, we just had some uh, slide interest, maybe somebody else informed to do a bid on that one. So we did, we should probably counsel. It's worked about four minutes. We have a pass, we have a strip park that's working, pull that down. We both did also just for uh, anybody who wants to get that out of there. I'll be comfortable considering the lettering of that for the status of competition.
You'll, you'll put together a bid sheet, spoke of what they're supposed to do, what it's supposed to look like after they get through. Who's responsible for the, 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 all that kind of stuff. That's right. Anything you'd like to say, council members?
You see, we're going to start the bid on, start the bid sheet out. That's the policy.
I personally think it's a good idea. You see what, I don't know who does that. Uh, Maxie, you got a comment with a vote on this? Three, you got three minutes to get back to it.
Let's talk about it.
If not, uh, you need a motion, permit this?
Mayor, I make a motion. We have, uh, go out for solicit bid for project demolition on the Cedar Street, Main Street houses.
Hey, Councilman Glasses, make a motion to, do I permit on this or authorize, Dr. Braeger, so. You got a second?
Yeah, second.
More discussion. If not, let's, everyone in favor, aye, say aye. Aye, all opposed, same. Maxis, four to zero. Uh, number ten. Discuss, consider, take action concerning Layton McAdams' story walk project. Any discussion?
I would like to say I appreciate you making that one presentation. I think it was really creative and innovative. I think that's how the impact on the teams, obviously, the government needs a part that's been played, sees up like that. I think they take you just with that, you just follow the story and uh, have a positive impact uh, on our country. Thank you for this uh, important agenda about this. Thank you.
The greeting is really important. And it makes a good outing for moms that are, you know, if you have the kids for a few hours. Need an activity, you know, it'd be a good physical activity and a good uh, academic activity as well. If uh, we, we want it from the public, like to. If not, any more discussion with the council or any motion on this?
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve Layton McAdams' uh, story walk project.
Second. You have a, a motion or a second? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. It's true or, or is it? Okay. Uh, at this point, the, my only thing remaining on the agenda is executive session. Okay. Does anybody have a desire to go into executive session? Okay, if not, I make a motion with your second. Because they're gonna have one, they're gonna have a motion to, to, to second. All in favor of that?
Aye.